All right.
I'd like to call the regularly scheduled board meeting of the Bryan City School Board of Education to order. Let us stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would you call the roll, Rob?
Scott Benedict.
Here.
Syndra Keeler.
Here.
Tom Lingby.
Here.
Deb Updike.
Here.
Mike Stockman.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, you have before you the minutes of the regularly scheduled July meeting as well as the August eighth special board meeting. Is there, having had the opportunity to review, are there any additions or corrections? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Deb?
I'll second.
Syndra?
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not aware of any public participation at this time, so Communications, four county report. Syndra?
Good evening. Good evening all. I want to say that the school has started with nine hundred and thirteen students in the building. However, that does change throughout the first few weeks as students throughout the twenty-two home schools do drop and go back to their home school, schools, but students are on waiting lists, so usually those stuff, spots are filled, so that's good. The wall of fame has been set for October eighteenth this year, and four county careers center will also be hosting their open house. They're celebrating fifty years this year. Nineteen sixty-eight, four county opened its doors. And something that I don't focus on is the adult education courses that are given at four county. I just want to let our listening audience know that there are classes for EMT, first responder, if you want to be an STNA. These are available through four county, through the adult career program, and if there is an interest, you can contact the school or check out the adult education part on their website for upcoming schedules or information. That's my report tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
We'll move on to the treasurer's report and recommendations. Rob?
Thank you. Start with our cash reconciliation report for the month ended July thirty-one, two thousand eighteen. The Farmers and Merchant State Bank, it balanced at three million two hundred and eighty-two thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Outstanding checks and adjustments, forty-three thousand twenty-three dollars. Investments at Star Ohio, eight hundred and four thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. At Morgan Stanley, four million six hundred and eighty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-eight dollars. At State Bank, six million two hundred and forty thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars. And at Star Ohio Plus, two million five hundred and ten thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Petty cash and check and change funds, total seven thousand four hundred dollars. Total funds at the end of July were seventeen million four hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Some of our fund balances, our general fund balance is thirteen million three hundred and thirty-eight thousand six hundred and forty-seven dollars. Our permanent improvement fund balance, one million eight hundred and forty-two thousand one hundred and forty dollars. Our construction funds, the LFI fund had forty-two thousand seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars, and the local share money, four hundred and forty-two thousand eight hundred and ninety-one dollars. Our project maintenance fund is four hundred and sixty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars. Once again, total fund balance, seventeen million four hundred and ninety-one thousand three hundred and fifty-one dollars. Any questions on those reports? If not, we'll move on to permanent appropriations. There are set up permanent appropriations for fiscal year two thousand nineteen at twenty-seven million six hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. Of those, the general fund is twenty-two million three hundred and seventeen thousand five hundred and seven dollars. A major, the major fund of all of those. Any questions on the permanent appropriation measure? And I will continue on. Our tuition rates established by the Ohio Department of Education, in-state tuition is six thousand two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and four cents per student, and out-of-state tuition, should we have a student from outside of Ohio went to attend, our school district would be ten thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-one cents. Again, those are established each year by the Ohio Department of Education. Few donations this month. On an annual basis, Tom Herman, for many years, has donated five hundred dollars for our golf team, and Tom has done so again this year. We thank him for his continued generous support of our golfing program. The Athletic Booster Club has donated seventeen thousand four hundred and seventy dollars for our Athletic Hall of Fame. Mr. Ruffer's going to follow up later with the report on that. And also, the Athletic Booster Clubs for the girls tennis team, they donated two thousand dollars for tennis bags for the girls tennis team. That concludes my report for this evening.
Okay, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve Ms. Rossworm's financial report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under old business, I'm not aware of anything, so we'll move on to new business and the superintendent's recommendations. Mrs. Savage?
Thank you very much. So, under administrative recommendations, we have some contracts and agreements to review. First of all, approval of the two thousand eighteen-nineteen school year YMCA transportation service contract, and that's an exhibit. So last year, we started transporting the YMCA students both before and after school. This year, we have extended that and specified that it's going to be offered every day that students are in session. Last year, there was a cancellation of the service at the end of the year, which put us in a position where our buses weren't being fully utilized, and it was costing us additional money and which we were not recouping. So this year, the agreement is every day that students are in session, before school, after school, and then the Y also asked us to add the noon pickups for Cub and preschool. So we are doing those on a, Mr. Rossworm has worked up a worksheet that recoups the cost of the maintenance, the mileage, the cost of the driver, and that is what we send to the YMCA, which is paid monthly. So, that is changes from last year's agreement to this year. Also, you have an MOU with Williams County Job and Family Services. So, Williams County Job and Family Services reached out to me. They would like to place a full-time employee here within our school district. This is a new program. It's something that the director, Fred Lord, thought would help improve communication between our two organizations, help improve service to families. This is being done at a cost to Williams County JFS. So it's their employee, their cost, their placement, their work location will be Bryan City Schools on a full-time basis. So instead of having to call to report a child neglect issue or a suspected issue, we'll have that person right here on our campus.
Where would they be, Diana?
Um, there is going to be a part-time office in both buildings, so they'll, they'll have to float a little bit between both buildings. And we'll need them to, based on the situation.
Curiosity, do they plan on being in any other district in the county?
No, we're the pilot. If it's successful, then they are looking at other districts in the county and making the same arrangements. But we're, we're kind of the pilot, and like I said, we, we're unaware that anyone else is doing this. We, I've already been contacted by Van Work County because they're very interested in this partnership and whether or not we're going to see results, so.
The thought process is this will be a little more efficient and a little more timely?
Yes. More accessibility.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds like a good idea.
The Wood County Juvenile Detention Center Agreement is an annual action, so that is for students who unfortunately need to have some out-of-district placement for short-term, long-term, and that's an annual agreement, and we're charged a per diem rate for the students who attend or are placed in that center. The Saint Patrick Catholic School Attendance Agreement, you may say, we've already approved this. This is a revision. We had to make a correction based on some information that we received from ODE late last week in that all students that attend Saint Patrick School are eligible to attend, and you'll notice we added health because we had some students that were already enrolled in health when we did the original agreement. So health, PE, music, which includes band, orchestra, choir. So, any student, including any of those on autism scholarship or John Peterson, are eligible to come. We cannot submit them to the state for funding, so this is something that Rob and I have discussed that we want to monitor this year to see what the impact is to our district. Are we taking up class sizes or making our class sizes too large? Are we seeing a benefit from it? And how much does it really cost the district? So I've asked Rob to kind of monitor that this year, so that, this is a one-year agreement, and we can look at it in the spring to see if we want to continue.
Are they aware of that aspect of the agreement? You know, the John Peterson kids are going to still come?
Yes.
And it's on a trial basis?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I will follow up with Connie just again tomorrow, once the board approves, to make sure. Renewed Mind, School Services Provider Agreement. So we, last year, were fortunate enough to have a school-based mental health counselor that was placed within our district two days a week, that serviced our students here onsite, which eliminated transportation barriers, time barriers. It was much better for our students. Towards the end of the year, we added another part-time person. There have been some changes in Renewed Mind, but the biggest change is, last year, this was in partnership with our grant, the Safe Schools Grant that Williams County shared. The Safe Schools Grant has ended, so now this agreement is just between Bryan City Schools and Renewed Mind, and it's also sponsored by Adams Board. So we thank the Adams Board, we thank Renewed Mind, and they will be placing once again a full-time mental health counselor here in our district for student services. So between, let's make sure I get them all, we have two social workers that we employ. We have the school-based mental health therapist that is provided by Adams Board in Renewed Mind. We have guidance counselors that we employ in each building, and we, we just have this, and later on, we're going to see the SROs. We just have a wealth, and with the JFS addition, we just have a wealth of support for both our families and students, like right here on our campus. So, and then, so are there any questions regarding any of those agreements or contracts? And then the last one, it's in this recommendation, we do have a student who is choosing to graduate early, so I would ask the board to approve the following student who have met all the graduation requirements for both Bryan City Schools and the state of Ohio, and this is Mariah Schuler, effective today. So congratulations to Mariah.
Wow. Okay. If there are no additional questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the superintendent's administrative recommendations.
I'll so moved.
Syndra?
Second.
Mike? Call the roll, Rob?
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, under personnel recommendations, we have two new hires. Dan Federkey, bus driver, up to three and a half hours per day. Dan comes with more than nine years' experience, but that's the highest we can go, so nine years' experience, effective August fifteenth. And Jennifer Vogel Song, bus driver, up to three hour, three point five hours per day, zero years' experience, also effective August fifteenth. As mentioned earlier, I'm pleased to recommend to the board a one-year limited contract for the eighteen-nineteen school year for Matt Fransdorf and Stan Nyheart as school resource officer, both effective August first, two thousand eighteen. It has been a welcome addition to our school year this year, and we also want to mention that the city has an officer that they employ that is also here on a daily basis. So, again, if, we'll have time for questions at the end of my presentation. Salary schedule placement for Betty, Betsy Slasher, master's plus twenty, effective August twentieth, and Tyler Bernath, master's degree, effective August twentieth. Transfer of classified personnel, effective this school year, Sherry Robinson, she's a preschool to grade five aid, four point two-five hours per day. An involuntary transfer classified personnel, effective this school year. We had two students that we had planned, or who had in their IEP that they needed one-on-one aides, and those two students have withdrawn and are enrolling in other districts. So we have to transfer the more senior aides into new roles. So that's why it's an involuntary transfer. And that's Dee Herman, a one-on-two aide to eight hours a day, and Jennifer Andrews, a six-to-twelve aide to five point five hours per day. Have changed in classified personnel hours, Tiffany Heller, pre-K five aide, from eight hours a day to seven hours per day, effective August fifteenth. Supplemental contracts for the eighteen-nineteen school year, fall set director Bernie Davis. And Mr. Rossworm, we're going to pull that for you to do, that next one, in a few minutes. And then finally, bus drivers, their hours are listed, effective for the eighteen-nineteen school year. And so you see those, the total hours, their routes, and then at the very bottom, Scott Stuckey, who is also a driver, but he is mainly our maintenance and upkeep, eight hours per day. And then you have an exhibit of a alphabetized list of both certified and classified substitutes for the eighteen-nineteen school year. And I will also take this minute to plug that we are still looking for subs in all positions, teacher, food service, bus driver, secretarial, educational aide, and we are also still looking for bus drivers, although I do have an update on that, that I'll talk about in our points of information. So those are my recommendations at this time, and then we'll have one from Mr. Rossworm.
All right, with that, if there are no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the personnel recommendations as presented by Mrs. Savage.
The only question I have, real quick, Tom, is Stan Nyheart on board already?
He is not. He will come on board September fourth.
Oh, okay. That was not a question.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion to approve the recommendations.
So moved.
Deb?
Second.
Scott? Would you call the roll, Rob?
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
And then, follow up with a recommendation for supplemental contract for the eighteen-nineteen school year for Chad Savage as varsity girls softball coach.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to approve that recommendation.
So moved.
Syndra?
A second?
Deb? Would you call the roll, Rob?
Scott?
Yes.
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, just under points of information, I would like to share with the board that school got back in session last week, as we all know, and it was a very good week. We had some bumps and bruises along the way that we are addressing and are working on, but overall, we have, still don't have a final number, but talking and seeing the enrollments and how many enrollments we've had come in, and then taking away the withdrawals, I would say we're serving about two thousand students. We are still doing, we did a whole new online registration process for all students. Again, still some bugs, some tweaks, but it's working. We had some more families stop in today to work on their registration. I'm going to let the building administrators talk about their viewpoints of the start of the year, but like I said, a few bumps and bruises here and there, but overall, we've had a great start, and we're super excited to have the kids back. That's the best part. So with that, we're going to turn it over to, oh, I do have a bus driver update, but we'll do that in a little bit. We'll do reports first. So, we have, who wants to go first? We'll let Karen go first.
Well, I know Diana touched on this too, but coming back after being in our brand-new building, it was amazing to see, I was in the month of July due to interviewing, and our custodial staff, I, I know Mark can speak for the six-to-twelve building, they were amazing this summer, truly amazing. The way that our building looks, how they worked together as a team and conquered different wings, they truly, they did a remarkable job, so grateful for all of the, all the work that they put into this summer. Also, we had our first tornado drill today. The Bryan Fire Department stopped in to make sure, again, safety is our top priority. They walked with me down to where I cover. The others were with the other administrators, just making sure that our tornado drill is as safe as it can be. The first couple of days, like Diana said, they were smooth, a couple bumps, but again, people have stepped up. We have our cafeteria aides that have stepped up, our library, just again, working out some kinks, but truly, just very thankful for everyone and their hard work to getting our year off to a good start. Our makerspace items, if you remember me talking about before, the Bryan Area Foundation donated several thousand dollars to our makerspace for that Twenty-First Century Hands-On Steam Stem Learning. And those, the Spiros and the VR headsets and the Ozobots that you guys got to, to observe are continuing to come in. Again, just thank you to the Bryan Area Foundation for these items to, so our students can bring out their creativity, their critical thinking, thinking skills, and then continuing to collaborate and work on those STEM activities. Our students, pre-K to twelve, are going to be partnering with the Bryan Area Foundation for a project called Expressions of Gratitude. And what that is, is students will be able to choose from different organizations supported by the Bryan Area Foundation, such as Solder Village, the Bed Brigade, Williams County YMCA, Sarah's Friends, the Bryan Swim Team, the Williams County Humane Society. But what this is, is a student, preschool through twelfth grade, can pick one of those organizations and talk about why they are grateful for that organization. So they're going, or the little guys can draw the picture if they are not able to write a sentence. So then, they're going to, we're going to give those to the Bryan Area Foundation, so they can create sort of a, a poster for our students to take home. But just another way to let the Bryan Area Foundation know what our, what our little people are grateful for and all the, the time and hard work that's gone into that. So we're excited that we have all of the month of September to have that into play. A couple of things that you'll see a little bit different at Bryan Elementary, our character trait assemblies are going to be slightly different. Our principals, along with our guidance department, met and they have, they wanted to touch more students. They wanted to give students, they wanted to acknowledge them for their growth that they've made, for behaviors demonstrated, for their character. We're still going to look at those character traits, but also give music, art, and PE awards, attendance awards, PDIS awards. So we're going to have two assemblies for the year. We know that it's going to be a lot of work, but instead of going monthly, we're going to have two. The first one will be December fourteenth, and the second one will be May seventeenth. But we feel that we, we really wanted to look, look at some of those other areas besides just character, which is very important, but look at some of those other areas. One last thing, I'm not sure if this was shared or not, it may have been, from the Wellness Committee, this is an update. Bryan City Schools was one of the healthiest companies in America for the second year in a row.
Okay.
And third place in our local NBHP Health Challenge, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Ray?
I'm going to echo a lot of what Karen said, she stole a little. It's all right, so I'll be a little shorter. So, no, the start of the school year has been fantastic. We're in the third year in the new facility. It's been extremely smooth. The culture and the excited faces coming in, it's been just a great, refreshing start to the school year, so we're really glad to be back. And I think all of us are like settled in now. It's day four, and we're, we're running, we're rolling, so it's, it's been really good. But as Karen noted, over the summer, they had a short window to complete the summer cleaning and maintenance. Custodial staff did outstanding job. If you get a chance to go through the buildings, or if you've been in them recently, they just, they spark clean. So, again, thank you to them. Also, we were, we were able to host again for the, I believe, the second annual year now, a tech roadshow, in which we hosted area educators from around the region, and are, I guess, going to give a big thank you to our tech team and the planning involved in that, because we had about a hundred and fifty educators from around the area in our facility that were gaining technology exposure and how they can use that and utilize it to enhance education. So it was really neat to see that in action this August, and we had a lot of our staff participate then as well. As noted earlier, a big thank you to our secretaries for the online registration process and our tech team, working out the little bumps that come along with that. But all in all, it's been a process that is now, I guess, taking shape, and we're getting to the end of getting everyone enrolled, so we're, we're glad about that. We did have some staff that were busy this summer. Mrs. Golds, if you know her, she teaches special education at the high school level, and she got accepted onto an Ohio Department of Education Committee, and they're going to review the alternate assessments that are issued to students with disabilities. So she gets to be one of twenty-one other people from across the state, or staff members from across the state that have input on this. So she's looking forward to that, so she can have a little input on state testing, as that takes shape for students that are identified, so. And then Brendan Knott, in his ceramics program, he recently got accepted, he's on the Ohio Designer Craftsman Board, which is a statewide board, and they have input to regional and statewide art shows and programs to help continue to build those. So he's glad and excited to be a part of that. And our SROs, thank you for making that happen. That is been an outstanding attribute in addition to our staff. We are extremely thrilled to have them walk in the hallways every day. The students love them, the staff love them. They're, you know, their feet are still getting wet, they're, just finished day four with students, but it's been a tremendous experience so far, and we're looking forward to all that they're going to bring for our district, so. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bassett, we'll let you go next. We'll save the best for last this time.
Well, good evening. Food service is off to a smooth start. If you ever want to see anything exciting, come watch the first time kindergarters walk in the cafeteria to eat. And kudos to Karen's staff, they do a well, good job of organizing them and flowing them. But kind of on the same note, is watching sixth graders come to the big building and say, we have options, we have something besides type A. And I think the second day, I kind of pushed them along a little bit, I think we got a hundred and seventy-six graders through in just a little under seven minutes, which was great. It was kind of decide what you want before you come into the line. But a new experience for them, just to see a beautiful cafeteria with some new stuff. I'm really excited. This year, we're going to try, we're going to pilot, it's NWI3.org, and what it is, was seven districts in the Toledo area, four in a consortium, and teachers came up with their own curriculum. You know, when you buy textbooks and things like that, they're written for multi-states, they're not necessarily Ohio. This is strictly Ohio. They laid it out by standards, and what's really neat is just another resource for our teachers. I had some teachers look at it last spring, they're really excited about it, because teachers spend a lot of time on the internet trying to find links to stuff, resources. This lays it out for them, by their standard for their class. So sixth grade through high school, tested subjects is what they wrote it for. So we're going to take a look at that this year, roll that out to our teachers at a meeting later this week, to get that ball rolling, so we can roll that out to our teachers. I think just another resource that they have at their fingertips, so another avenue to teach kids. And I can never stand up here without talking about testing, so start of school, we're ready for kindergarten readiness assessment, the KRA rolls out right away. You feel bad for those kiddos that just coming into school and surprised we need, we need to test you. We'll get that started here, and the ball rolling. On that, next week, the teachers are, they always want to cross that checklist off and get those kiddo, those kiddos tested for you.
Thank you. Mr. Ruffer?
Thank you. We've actually got two scores already started. Tennis played tonight, I haven't heard how they've done against Woodward, but they started off pretty hot, five and oh. They've played twice over the weekend, and have had a good start to the season. Got a lot of kids, even some freshmen, some varsity times and stuff, so that's been kind of exciting for them. Golf's off to a pretty good start, too. They've played in four tournaments, placed in first, second, third, and fourth in those tournaments. And I believe out of three of those tournaments, we had a medalist in three of those tournaments. So we've got some kids that put some time in and that sort of thing, they're starting to see some results with that. Everybody else is kind of waiting to get going here. Volleyball- Um, volleyball starts tomorrow, they go to Tenora. Uh, girls soccer's home with Shawnee tomorrow night. Uh, boys soccer, they're actually waiting till Thursday with Van Wert. Um, cross-country is this Saturday at Defiance, Early Bird. Uh, and then football kicks off Friday night at Van Wert at seven o'clock. Uh, and then junior high, they've got a couple starting this week until the start next week, here and there. Um, we've, we've been along, uh, lines with the InfoSnap transition. Uh, I think that's been a very good thing. Um, TK likes it in the office, she's not pulling her hair out quite as much, uh, because it is online and they've done that, so that's been a great asset for us. Um, like, a few people have said there have been a couple bugs or here, here and there, but, uh, I'd probably put Tom Carnes up for employee of the year. It's up to me, uh, he's done an outstanding job of getting back with us, um, and coaching us through it, uh, some of those things, so that's been a great help. Um, we've had our parent meeting already, and unfortunately, we had to cancel, uh, meet the teams and state recognition, uh, last Friday, uh, with the weather coming in and stuff. Uh, we got to have football scheduled, and so, those are just some of the things that have been going on in the athletic department. I know Mr. Ross and Mrs. Savage want me to talk a little bit about the record boards and wall of fame. Um, my best way to describe it is they're on the way. Um, I was told probably about three weeks ago, they would be here in four weeks. Worked with enough companies, we'll see if that remains to be true or not. I know I contacted them last week, and they said they would have a better update sometime this week for us. Uh, but they should be here fairly shortly, and hopefully we can get those up and on the wall and go from there, uh, pretty soon. Uh, boosters were very generous, uh, can't remember the final number now, I know they've read it before, but close to eighteen thousand dollars, uh, that they invested in. Um, and that'll be records for, any record we basically keep, um, for any sport will be up there. We try to include all the sports, uh, some, you'll see some recognition more for certain sports than others. That comes down to some sports we keep more stats for, some keep, we keep less for, it just kinda depends on the sport. Doesn't mean there's a less importance for sports, but, um, some of them, some of them require more stats, those types of things. Uh, and then that wall of fame should be up as well, so, it's kinda where we're at with that. If you have any questions over that, I'd be more than happy to answer those as well.
Great, I thought it's coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, um, a couple of points of information for me. Um, first of all, bus driving routes, with the two hires that we had tonight, and then we had one route still not filled. Uh, Joe contacted me today, Joe Beck, and he has a driver who has retired, but is interested in returning. So I need to get with our, um, attorney to make sure we have the language, because this is a new retire-rehire, so we have to have a public hearing to allow the public to comment on whether or not we should retire-rehire this physician. And we have to advertise that for, I'm hoping thirty, but I'm thinking sixty days, is what he's going to tell me. Um, so we're still in a delay process, but we have identified that last spot. In the meantime, he can sub for us, um, we just can't officially rehire him until we, we allow that process to take place. So with that, we are technically filled. We have two drivers that are still classified, or will be classified, as retired-rehired. So again, you know, if we have people interested, we would love to start training. I wanna touch on the SRO update as well. Um, what an amazing, um, what amazing individuals we were able to find that are interested in serving our students and our staff and our school district. Um, they're professional, they are knowledgeable, they both have over twenty, close to twenty-five years' experience in law enforcement. Um, so I'm very excited as to what they bring to us, but I'm also excited to what has already been, you know, we've had lots of positive comments from community members and staff and students, so. And they've just been spending their day getting to know the staff, getting to know the students, getting to know the layout, kind of getting their routines developed. We met today, and we'll continue to meet throughout this year, so that if there's anything that needs addressed, we can do that. Um, and we'll meet with the city as well and make sure that we're communicating with them along with this partnership. So, great, again, thank you to the board for the two that we hired, and thank you to the city for the third that is being, um, provided by the city. And then finally, I, I thought of this, and it probably should've been under Old Business, but just an update on the Portland and Washington sites, because we talked about that last month here at the board meeting. Rob has been more involved than I have, more hands-on with this, but we have, as we said, we've met with Rudolph Libby. We've laid out in writing the plan of what is supposed to be happening with both sites. Um, Washington looks a lot better than Portland, at least when I lasted my drive-by last week. Um, but unfortunately, weather is still not cooperating with us. Um, maybe, Mike, you can attest to that, we're not getting a lot of help there.
It's helped the grass grow at Washington, though.
But do you wanna touch on kind of what that plan entails? Because Washington still isn't done perfect.
There's still some low spots at Washington, the water's laying, or they'll be going back in and adding some more topsoil to, to bring that grade up, so we don't have so many pockets where the water's laying. The Portland Street site, uh, needs a lot more work. We have, uh, they have to get in there and, and de-rock it and pick up the, the junk, uh, level it. There was some discussion about maybe hiring a landscaper to come in, but the instruction was, get the, get the weeds killed off through spray, and then get it leveled and cleaned up, and then reseed it. So, we should have, uh, we should have some action taking place in the next couple of weeks there. September first kinda being the, the target date for when we wanted to, to have it seeded. So, we will continue to work with Rudolph Libby and, um, Ned got it mowed the other day, double-cut it. Uh, there's just a tremendous amount of crabgrass, and it's, uh, you know, it is still not where we want it to be by any step of the imagination, but it's a process we're working through to get it there, so. It does have pri- it's on the priority list.
And we-
Thank you for your diligence.
And we wish it was a wee faster.
We do. And we do have another core meeting coming up this week, so that's one of our points of discussion as well. With, when the, when the core meeting happens, the state comes in, and, because they're a partner with us, so they'll be there as well.
And both of those contracts for both of those demolition projects, we still have plenty of retainage, plenty of money held back, if the thing's not done right.
Rob, on the last little project we had here in terms of the sidewalk parking lot, has that all been, uh, closed out, that job, or has that still got retention on that?
Plenty of, yeah, there's a great deal of retention on that.
Okay.
Maybe still owe close to seven hundred thousand dollars. It's GMP four, which included the elementary school remodel, and then we had the parking lots and sidewalks and those projects added on top of it.
I forget, our contract is with Rudolph Libby, so that's the only one we have to worry about. Rudolph Libby's got the issues with their, their subcontractors.
Yes.
Farrell's came in, started manicuring, did some nice landscaping work around our sidewalks, and the areas have been finished, and, uh, they got it seeded, hydro-seeded, and, uh, got a little rain, and hopefully that'll take off if we can keep people from walking through it. But it, it's starting to take shape out here.
So, other questions before we go over future meeting dates, or any questions from the board? Okay. Update, upcoming meetings, our next Board of Education meeting will be September seventeenth at seven PM in the Fieldhouse Boardroom. Our LPDC meeting is to be determined. Our Business Advisory Committee, we do have that date, let me grab that real quick. I believe that's next Tuesday, it's twenty eighth. Yes. So, um, August twenty eighth, which is Tuesday at seven AM, here at the Fieldhouse Boardroom. So, tonight, we welcome our new staff members, and we're gonna host a small reception for them to get to know you as board members, and for the board members to get to know you, and we welcome you to Bryan City Schools. So we're gonna let, I think Mark's gonna go first?
Yep, so I have one of our new hires with me, this is Samantha Fowles. She comes to us her first year of teaching, um, from Molly Green State University. So, welcome Samantha.
Welcome.
Welcome.
And teaching what? Middle school science. Okay.
Good.
Yeah, and next, um, at the elementary, we have Lindsay Stack, she's one of our fourth-grade intervention specialists. And we have newly married, um, she was Megan Tappin, she's now Megan Graham. She is our elementary music. And Ashley Rice is our two-three cross-cat unit. And Tracy Cook is our new art teacher for four and five. Rachel Mann, our new guidance counselor. And Chanda Swank, our new school-aged, uh, psychologist. And Sarah Heward, one of our guidance counselors, so, yeah, welcome.
So we have a few, um, welcome gifts for you, so everybody can take a bag that's out on the table. And then you can also choose from the variety of other goodies that are on the table. Choose one, there's coffee mugs, there's drink cups, there's Post-it notes, there's blankets. And take those with you, and we welcome you to Bryan City Schools. And then, again, for the board and for our guests, we have a small reception in the hallway, so.
Very, great.
We need to finish up the meeting, though.
As I think we've already mentioned, I do not believe there's any need for executive session, so with that, I guess I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Scott?
Second.
Mike, would you call the roll, Rob?
Syndra?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay.
Meeting adjourned.